Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Uh, two weeks.
Okay, uh, Mr. Representative Van Smith.
That's a good trade off.
Well, guys, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you and, uh, Joe asked me to come and, uh, just talk a little bit about the livestock building. I, I assume that's why you want me up here. But before I get started on that, uh, we have a bill that's, has come from the senate and it's in the house now. And it, uh, I think it's a bill that county government can live with. It's been proposed that we increase weight limits on, uh, log trucks. Uh, I understand the problem with log trucks in that especially pulpwood, the, the axles that are right on the tractor, uh, they will be overweight just about every time you weigh them, but when you weigh the, the general, uh, the truck in general, it will be under the weight limit. So, it, it, there is a, a tough thing to weigh and you guys that have weighed trucks, you know that weighing on split scales, it's always gonna be a, a problem anyway. So, uh, there were several proposals, uh, but one was to weigh, uh, weigh and increase the overall weight of trucks. We already give them a ten percent allowance. Uh, eighty thousand pounds is what we're supposed to do. Ten percent overage is almost ninety thousand pounds. Uh, my thought is kinda like when I was a teenager, uh, if daddy gives in on this, what, what's the next thing he'll give in on? So I think we had to, we had to stop that weight, uh, and there was some give and take, but, uh, timber was not willing to negotiate much at all. And so the bill that came out of the senate, uh, I think is a bill that we can live with and our bridges still exist and do a, uh, a, you know, service for a long time and, and not tear our roads up quite as bad. But that, uh, if you've got questions about that, I'll do that and then we'll talk a little bit about a cattle building.
No, sir.
All right, uh, okay.
Is that dump trucks included in that?
No.
Dump trucks are included, but they're not as, uh, they already pay a se- a severance, uh, in the counties, uh, by the weight that they come off the scale zone. So they're paying so that when those pits and all leave, they'll have, you'll have funds in your, I know in Otoga County, you'll have funds in your account to be able to repair roads, so. But the, the here, here again, Butch, the, uh, the, the, the weight limit is equally distributed on most of those gravel trucks. Where on the log trucks, and if you're hauling logs, it's different from hauling pulpwood.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, any other question? Well, I, I was thinking about it on the way up here, uh, I think what you're gonna have to do is decide what you want for your community. Years ago, in Otoga County, we decided we were gonna build an arena and there's a, a real difference between an arena where you can hold a rodeo and a, a, a barn where you could have a pig show or a goat show or cattle show. Uh, a- and there's a, a vast difference in between those, uh, facilities. But if you start looking at places to go to, there's several really good examples. Uh, we think ours is a good one in Otoga County. Uh, you can hold a, a rodeo, a full rodeo in there along with car shows, dirt bike races, uh, you know, animal shows of, uh, from dogs to cattle and, 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 and it, uh, funds itself and we have a full-time director there that is, it, he's there all the time and, uh, promotes the building. And, and you would need that if you're gonna do that kind of arena. You'd, you'd need a person there booking and keeping everything ready and getting ready for shows. He has a full-time assistant and then we have a, a one person that helps clean that's a part-time person. Uh, so there are, it's not like you can just build a facility and, and it's gonna maintain itself. It's gonna have to have, it's gonna be the gift that keeps on giving, okay? So it's gonna cost some on in the future. However, if your, if your entertainment that's coming in, uh, whether it's a cattle show, uh, or a horse show, um, uh, a roping and those kinda things, those are gonna bring revenue in, into town. They'll bring in, uh, heads in the beds, you know, uh, buy gas, buy meals, those type of things. So that's how, uh, that is funded after the initial cost that, of building the facility. Now, there's other smaller venues. If you want a venue like you've got now, uh, you, you probably th- talking about, you know, three to five hundred thousand dollars. It may be less, but that, but it, it's not gonna be a big draw to put on a, a horse show. It's not gonna be a big draw to have, uh, the one in, in Otoga will put, they have a full circus in there. Uh, so i- and it, i- it draws people and, and sells a lot of, a lot of things. One of the things to do too is if it's a youth event, it's a, it's free, okay? If it's an adult event, then it, they, the county commission charges for that facility to be used. So, there, uh, there, there have been some, there needs to be some bylaws and all that if you're gonna do, do that. Otogaville has got one. Coleman County has a good one and theirs has expanded to some other barns. Um, Columbiana has one, uh, that's close. So tho- those are three that are, are fairly closed. If you want to get one to one that's kind of in between what you've got and, and it, and the ones here that I just mentioned, then Helen, Georgia has a, a really nice one. Uh, now you can't have a rodeo in, it's not that big. Uh, and then you can have smaller venues that are, uh, you know, eighty by a hundred. They might be like Pike County has an open-sided arena and they can, they can handle a full-size rodeo. But it's not, it's not enclosed like the, the three I mentioned a while ago. So, I, I think, I think what you've got to do is decide what we want, how we're gonna initially pay for it, and then what do we want it to do for Chilton County after we get it erected? So, with that, I would, uh, you know, take questions and Tommy Brown can help me. He's, he's been in this for a long time too and David can also back there. So if you've got questions about that.
I got a question. How big is the, uh, one in prep?
You know, I knew you were gonna ask me that and I called Lee Pittman on the way up here who was our manager and he didn't answer, so, uh, I, I don't know, uh, David, you gotta guess. I've got a guess, but I don't.
I'm gonna guess that it's about two hundred and fifty by a hundred.
That's the inside arena.
Inside the arena.
Okay, so the building is, is much bigger than that. And we built that in phases. Um, it, it doesn't look like it, but we did try to do it in phases. And so the first phase was a little shorter than that. It was about fifty to seventy-five feet shorter. And we were having problems with the, the barrel racers. Uh, they would have to start outside and run into the building and the horses going from dark into daylight was, they didn't like, the, the contestants didn't like that, okay? So our, our second phase was to extend the arena, which we did where they could start inside the arena. The second, uh, with that second phase, we built a horse barn, uh, which is stalls in an open-sided building. And we built fifty horse stalls. Uh, now if you want a sure enough horse show, uh, you need at least a hundred stalls. But we did fifty stalls in that second phase and the third phase was supposed to be a second barn with another fifty stalls and a covered, uh, way back into the arena. And so we were never able, the state money's kinda dried up and, uh, so we never got that, the third phase of that done.
Uh, do you, do you remember, what year was that started and completed?
That was somewhere around, uh, eighty-nine, eighty-eight, eighty-nine is when that was. And we, we had an oversight committee that did travel and look at, at facilities around. We went over into Mississippi, we went to Coleman, we went to Columbia, uh.
Okay.
So.
Do you remember, uh, any type of the, um, the amount and then what the process they initially, how they initially funded theirs?
Yeah, we, we, uh, we thought that the, the best I can remember now, so that's always, we thought that we could build the, the whole arena at that time for, I, I think it was a little less than a million dollars. And.
That was in eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Uh, yeah, early eighty-nine. And there was other monies in there too. There was monies, uh, the Otogaville Lions Club is about the only barbecue facility that could be state inspected. It's part of that. So there was a portion of that building that we took up, um, not part of the arena, but on the side of it that, uh, was covered in, and it, they had some money there. When the architect's estimate came back, it was like one point five million. And so when we started, uh, around the room to see how much money we had, there were a lot of folks like me that didn't have any money. And then there were a bunch of folks around the table that had white shirts on and, and I remember sitting by Mr., uh, Buzz Winland and when that estimate came out, I, I looked at one of my friends. I said, well, what are we gonna cut out? And Mr. Winland leaned over to me and said, let's see how much money we got as we go around the table before we cut anything out. And by the time we got around the table, we couldn't put the bleachers in it. And we were able to put the bleachers in it the next year. So, uh, we did, did it a little bit like that. And, but there was, back then there were, um, some individuals in state government that had a lot of money that was just kinda out there that could be used for things like that. So, and one of them was, we would enter into a, a loan, but the senator had money that he could pay the loan payment. So that's how that got done back, back in those days. Now, it, uh, but the cost from that, uh, from there on was funded by county government.
How many, how many acres is?
It sits on about, uh, I think that the entire complex is about ten acres. Understand they've got another building there too. And that, that was one thing that some of us were talking about today. Here again, depending on what you want, you have an opportunity for a revenue stream if you would put your fall conservation or in our, in our CS, uh, uh, your, uh, you put all your ag people in a facility, you know, maybe that's on that same area. If it, you know, if it can be used for that, uh, like our, um, our forestry service. Um, all the, the extension service building, all, well, they pay rent. So, that's another way to get a revenue stream there. Now, it's two separate buildings and they're in kind of the front building with an auditorium that you could have, you know, you could seat about a hundred people in for a meal. And then you've got the arena itself in, in behind there. Uh, it, the other thing too, that when you start looking at this, i- it's not just an ordinary building, okay? If you've ever been to a calf show, everybody runs blow dryers and fans and those kinda things. Uh, and so a lot of those, those things that we think would be simple, we'll wire it like we wire our house and well, that's not right. We, you'd have breakers, it doesn't, if you do it right, you'll have a breaker on every plug, uh, which is a little different from what your house would be or a barn that you are, a shop you would have at home. Cause you're gonna have a, a, a bunch of draw on that when you, when you have those cattle and, and horse shows and those kinda things, so.
Did you mention it's self-sufficient now?
It is covering its, uh, its expenses now, yes. Which is, is a good thing.
I agree with you. How long did it take to get to that point?
I, I don't know, um, but, uh, it's, it's covering its expenses now. And it, and like I said, when you have a, when you have a, an adult rodeo there, the, an adult, you know, it's not the sheriff's department funding it, but they try to work with the sheriff's department. Uh, they work with their four eights, they work with the, the schools to allow them to use it. But when it's a, a straight adult event where, uh, maybe, uh, uh, the Lions Club's trying to make money for a project, then they charge them for that.
How many employees?
You got a full-time director, you got an assistant director, and then you got a half-day person. But like I said, here again, it, it, it is, it does generate revenue. That, that's the deal. But here again, what you have now, if you build it new or if you refurbish it, it will draw some, but it's not gonna draw enough to support itself like we're talking about there, so.
Do y'all have any kind of like a little county fair or anything that's that around that circle?
We don't have a fair there, no. Well, I mean, like I said, we will have circuses come in that are sponsored by, you know, adult groups in there. But as far as the traditional fair like we used to have out at the airport, uh, we don't, we don't have that.
That was one of the ways I was thinking about funding that thing is maybe having a fair every three to four months.
And you could, it, you could do that. It, it certainly would be a way to generate revenue.
Any more questions? Tommy, you wanna speak? Okay, Tom, I thought Tommy was gonna talk to us.
Well, Tommy can. Tommy can tell you better, better than I can. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your leadership in the county.
Appreciate you, Van. Appreciate.
The thing, our county fair here, it was a civic club that sponsored the fair. And got the benefits of it, the county whole, alright, the county fairgrounds all the years and twenty-five years or so that I was pulled over, but didn't have any authority type of deal. Uh, they just paid the power and all that. Uh, we had to go do all that and then whatever they made, you know, went to that particular club and stuff.
It's sorta like a giveaway.
Yeah, it was like what they have now, the Quanis or whoever has the rights and power.
Whatever civic group puts it on, that's fundraiser for them.
Way it was set back then. The JC's had it for years and then when they sort of threw them out the corners or somebody took over, it was shut down.
Okay.
That's one other thing too. Not the state legislature, but the state fair board has funds that if you have a pig show, they will provide a certain amount of money at the fair for a pig show or for a calf show or for a goat show, uh, those kinda things. There, there are fair funds that are used, provided to counties that have those, um, have those things going on.
That's good to know. All right, thanks a lot there, uh, Van. Okay, uh, Sheriff.
Good evening, lady and gentleman. How are you? Oh, I'll, I'll only have one thing tonight. Oh, need to ask for a resolution to reclassify Scott Starnes, oh, as a corrections officer. From deputy to a corrections officer.
All right, anybody got a question? All right. Short and sweet. Thank you, sir. Commission office, Ms. Sylvia.
Uh, in your, uh, uh, packets that you had received, you had the policy and procedures for animal control department for collection donations for solicitation and acceptance of donations. Uh, and you also had one for parks and, uh, recreation department. Did anyone have any changes or comments on any of that? This is brand new.
Well, it's brand new, yeah. It's an all-new.
Yep, what Ben and the office staff came up with.
It, it looked, it looked good when I read over it.
Yeah.
Um, the next is to, um, um, talk about adding Venmo to our, our, uh, methods of collecting for the parks or for the animal control. Venmo, we have Square and when you use Square, the money goes directly into your bank account. Um, there is a fee for cards that are used. Uh, Venmo, the money goes into a Venmo account, but there's no charge for any cards that are used. And then you transfer the money from Venmo into your bank account. And it was just one of the, one of the additions to, uh, collecting, uh, donations or fees, whatever, at the parks and at the animal shelters.
Well, I know a lot of people use Venmo. I couldn't tell you how it works or how it operates. Uh, but I think that's a good idea, uh, to allow donations through Venmo.
Believe it or not, as low-tech as I am, I actually have a Venmo account. Comes in handy with, handy to bring kids at the concession store.
You're not as old as I am, really.
Well, then, then I'll, I'll put that in the form of a resolution and, uh, ask for signatories for the bank account that'll need to be accompanying it.
All right.
Um, temporary hire for janitorial. For several years, we've had three budgeted and we do all we can to keep two. Um, and right now because of, um, uh, a need to cover them when one is out, I would love to do a temporary hire. Um, and then later on, talk about, um, an advertising to hire. Uh, in your package, you'll see that I've asked for a pay increase for Nick Barfield, uh, at the rate that is listed there. Did anyone have any questions about that? Uh, evaluations have been done. The next is the proclamation for our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, the founding of our nation. Um, Governor Ivy has sent a proclamation as well. Uh, and she asked that we do some sort of public commemoration for this event somewhere around the eighteenth. If that is, and, and there is a resolution in there that we can, um, that. Yes, yes. And, uh, we can use that for, uh, our, fill in the blanks and use that for our resolution.
Yeah, I wanted to know how that worked. I was gonna ask about the lights.
We have the two lights, uh, but we, we may want to do something a little differently. Um, it, the little holder is maybe three inches and it holds two little candles. So we thought we might, could use, uh, the, um, the candles that you like use during holidays, get something there battery operated, that might be more. You might be able to see it better. Feel a little safer to use.
I was under the impression they wanted like two spotlights that like shot up.
I was under them. I got the candle part down there, but I didn't.
The deal was the two lights in the windows.
Something.
Put a police car up on courthouse and turn the lights on.
Bone's got a spotlight on his thing.
Uh, next is the Veterans Affairs lease agreement. Um, it is, um, it was just a lease that we had from several years ago. It's been retyped and it just, the dates have been changed in it. Um, and I talked to Mr. Eastaline already and, um, um, he's agreed to the one year, doing this one year at a time. Uh, but, um, if, if it, if, if this is in agreement, then we would just want to, uh, have the lease signed for one year. And he is, he just said, just send it to him.
Um, we're running close to courthouse being available at that time, so.
The lease starts what month?
April first.
April first. We can probably get him to go month to month after that.
I'm sure. He, he is a veteran himself and he, this is, this is close to his heart as well.
Yep, he's a, he's a good father. Okay.
Um, I, I'm hoping you had a chance to look at the WSFA hometown news. They are asking for a sponsorship. Um, they will be doing, um, interviews around the county. Specific, I think more specifically in, in Clanton, but, um, they're asking for our sponsorship. The amount is two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and that includes a lot of promercials before the event and commercials during the event.
Ms. Sylvia, have we spoke to the city about any kind of shared cost in that since the hometown, um, news is actually focused on Clanton itself? Is what I understood.
I have not. Um, I'd be glad to, um, but no, I have not spoken to it.
It sounded like when she called me that day, she'll be going across the street too.
Okay, all right.
So they're wanting a sponsorship from the city and the county?
Uh, ye- well, and they have already, they had slots for so many and they, they listed in there the ones that they had, um, already gotten from bigger corporations, so. Um, just a reminder, airport authority nominations, we had Trey Kate and Keith Collins, Jared Bates. Their term, the term would end eleven-thirty-twenty-nine. I forgot to mention, uh, Central Alabama Wellness. That needs to, that is the, uh, meeting as well. We have one nominee and that is Macisha Cleckley. Uh, the Chilton Water Authority nominations, we have Terry Jackson, John Allen, Jeff Williams, Doug Byce. Mr. Benson's slot that would be, um, be replacing ends, uh, April of twenty-nine and Mr. Williams's slot term ends, uh, April of thirty-one.
Uh, it'd probably be appropriate here to address the panel's meeting and discussion on the nominations. We met last week and quite honestly, we had some, uh, I was quite impressed with most of the, uh, discussions we had with each of them. Uh, we decided on, uh, Keith Collins, it'd be the recommendation from the panel for the airport authority. And the replacement for Mr. Harry Benson's slot that ends four-one of twenty-nine will be Terry Jackson. And for Jeff Williams to, uh, be reappointed for his term.
I'll just ask if these be set aside and we vote on them in the regular agenda.
Okay.
And I guess we would vote on all of them or?
We vote on each one. Yeah, they'll be, they'll be divided up. Yeah. That's why Ben said we need to do them and know, make it clear. Okay? All right, that all, Ms. Sylvia?
I think it is.
Just making sure you didn't have some notes.
No, sir. Oh, well, um, no, I think that was under, that was under someone else. I think that's it.
Okay, all right. Nick Bolton, EMA.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so we're simple tonight, just at Sheriff's Office. Uh, we just need a resolution to, uh, change our pay scale to the pay scale that's attached that you have in front of you there. Just be a three percent raise, part of six that we got on last year. It was approved in the budget and evaluations have been done.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Nick. Okay, Donald Giles.
First thing I wanna say, I wanna say thank you to the sheriff's department for, uh, reserves we had at our March fling at Menucha Park. It was a lot of help. We had a big turnout. I wanna thank them for that, but. Uh, next thing, I'm asking for a resolution for a new hire, Lisa Thomas to go full-time, effective April the twelfth. Pay rate is shown on the attachment. And I'm asking resolution to do a temporary hire for assistant manager, starting on April the twelfth. And then to, a resolution to advertise for two caretakers.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner report, uh, Commissioner Billingsby.
I'm gonna be asking, I know, I'm gonna be making the motion that we accept the, uh, RFP. It's been updated by the nine-one-one board and it be posted immediately to, for an ambulance service, RFP, for the ambulance service, which is, that's a request for proposal. We get this posted. Uh, y'all have to excuse me, I'm breath. Uh, it's been a lot of things on median and I'll probably repeat this tomorrow night too, if I can make it, is people been wondering what's going on with ambulance service. Ambulance services, far as getting the ambulance in this county, has never been dropped, period. I was working on it before I was elected and I was working on it the time I was sworn in. It's taken some time because we got so many federal regulations that we have to go by. But it is completed and it is ready to be sent out immediately. So if tomorrow night, if this board approves it, then it can be posted immediately. Now, Now, what I understand, the ambulance services have thirty days to get their proposal back. And it'll come back, and it'll be in a sealed bid that will be open at a certain time, designated time by this commission board. And then we'll go from there. Uh, I'm, and on media post, what I started a minute ago, is a lot of people had been saying the ambulance has been dropped. There were some people says, no, there's a new board there, give them some time, and I thank them for that. That's exactly what we needed. So, I will be asking for that. No, I'm not going to be asking, I'm going to be making the motion for that for tomorrow night. Did I leave out anything, Sheriff? Okay.
Well, I'm going to say on that subject, um, I know Commissioner Billingsley's been out recuperating for a month or so, but that don't mean he hasn't been working. He's been working at home on this. Uh, I placed Butch on the nine-one-one board for this one purpose, to get this ambulance service. I tasked him with this, and I want to commend all the commissioners. Every commissioner up here knew what was going on, but we did not want to get word out in the county until we had something to say, because we didn't want a bunch of confusion going on. So, I thank each one of them for keeping it under their hat, because this was very important to me, that this commission did it this way. And I'm commending Commissioner Billingsley tonight for his efforts, even though he was not feeling well, he stayed on task, and I appreciate it. And hopefully, this will get us to where people who say this was dead will see that it's not dead. That we'll get to a point where we'll have an ambulance service in this county, hopefully. It's going to depend on what comes back from those companies.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
That's all I have.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Bone?
Uh, the three things I have up under my name, I'm going to ask to table it till the next meeting.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Childers?
Uh, yes, I'll be, uh, asking the resolution, the motion to, uh, for a load of gravel for the animal shelter, uh, from the, uh, road department, and I'm sure he will make sure that we, uh, get our, that hits our budget, not his. Uh, and then, uh, just an update, we are, uh, for finished, maybe just a little, a couple places for a touch-up, uh, on all of our painting down there. As I mentioned, uh, previously, we've got the roof siding gutters, painting done. X-back is going in, and the windows will be going in as soon as they're delivered, and, and then the next, uh, next thing we need to consider is security cameras. Uh, we did have a bid on that that was just way out of our budget, and so, we're going to have to, uh, we'll, we'll be looking for a simpler, maybe a simpler, safe type, uh, security system down there. We have one, but it's just antiquated, and we need to, we need to be able to access it via cellular, uh, devices, and, uh, that, that'll be the next on the agenda.
You saying we need to update and get a little more high-tech?
Yeah, I might even go along with it.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hall?
Yes, just, uh, briefly, uh, we're continuing to seek good, full-time employees. Uh, Terry and Christina working applicants are just a little slow coming in, and we want the right fit for the people to do a great job. Animal control, uh, that shelters is a big deal. Um, also, I just, it is just comments on the monthly animal control reporting updates. The, the reports will, um, be available monthly, and you may be able to obtain a copy for a reasonable fee if you want a copy, but you can come to the shelter to review, as well as to the commission office to get a copy of the reports, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Headley?
Yeah, I'll be making a, a motion to, uh, move forward with the multi-purpose facility for Gavin, Joe, and stuff, you know. Start, I guess our first start will be, I'll get with Sylvia, see if I can run down some money a little bit, get started, you know. We may have to do like, uh, Mr. Smith said, we may have to smart, start small and just let it flow and keep, keep adding on. And, uh, and then, too, uh, I'll be making a resolution to, uh, we need to put nothing out, I told them to put it on, but, considering our maintenance of the Chilton County News, every week, what he could publish.
Okay.
So, I, I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
I was, I was just wondering, uh, we had heard from Mr. Smith, but, um, Joe, what, what he, on the multi-purpose facility, you know, he talked about, um, different levels and that. What, what's your vision? I mean, what, what are, I know kind of what we had talked about earlier and, and things, but, I mean, and we're talking about doing it in phases. Can you, can you elaborate, elaborate a little bit on what we discussed, where to put this? And, and kind of what we're going to use that land for and those kind of things?
Yeah, I was thinking about putting it down to where the, was going to put the fair over behind the OA there. And, uh, you know, and have it to where we'll have a, the facility, and then, like, uh, you know, the four-H center and all that kind of stuff can maybe move in and help fund some of that. Uh, and the, uh, but far as a vision for it, I mean, uh, it's, it's, uh, you know, I'd want, uh, the bigger, the better.
Yeah.
You know, uh, when I look at something, I, I don't, I don't like to do no little something that's going to last for a year or two and be a, out of date. I'm looking for something for twenty or thirty years down the road, you know, for, uh, what it'd be for grandchildren, whatever.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's not going to be cheap, but, uh, I think we can, like I said, the fair coming in, if we take the money that we can make off of that fair, I think that'd be good income to, uh, probably help pay for that facility too.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
There was another arena, I don't think I mentioned, you may not even know about, Bluntsville has just finished their multi-purpose building, and I've got a, a region meeting up there next month, so I'm going to take some pictures and bring them back. We might go up there and look at that one day. It's, I rode by it, I came by it the other day, and it's a nice facility, it's brand new.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, anything else?
Oh, no, that's, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Perkins?
Howdy, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm going to hand these out to, uh, passing these down. This is a, um, and I'm going to ask that the name of the organization not be mentioned. This is confidentiality agreement. Uh, I've got it under here. This is a, um, I'm going to ask for a resolution tomorrow to accept, uh, the contract. And this has to, in reference to Bass Tournament Organization coming into the county. Um, uh, like I said, it's a confidentiality agreement as far as who it is, because they protect that from their anglers before the, uh, schedule is announced. But I will tell you that it's, um, a little bit of information on it. It's a, uh, national organization. It would be for a three-year contract, uh, beginning in twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight. Um, it's, um, for the investment, uh, the, it's a forty thousand dollar investment that they, that they ask for the host county or the city. It's just something that several years ago was, was, uh, tossed around and discussed by the previous commissions, uh, Chamber of Commerce and the City of Clanton. And at that time, the City of Clanton was in favor of, uh, splitting that with the county. And from some, uh, conversations that I've had in, in, uh, private with, uh, some city officials, I feel like that they will be on board to do that again. Um, this would generate, this one event would generate, uh, roughly around one point one to one point three million dollars in economic impact per year to the, to the county and to the city, uh, uh, in this area. So, um, I, I can answer pretty much any questions you have on it. Um, they just asked their, their name to be, um, redacted, I guess, from it, from the contract for the public for time being. They won't make their announcements till about July. Now, I know it's a little, it's a little strange, because we're here, we are in, uh, April of twenty twenty-five, but the way they do their, uh, contracts and their scheduling, this would be something that we would allocate in the twenty twenty-six budget. You know, the payment wouldn't be due for this particular event until early spring of next year.
I'm not sure you may want to tell them a little bit about their process, how, the way you know that.
Yeah, let me see if I can, um, well, I mean, it, one, they'll make the announcement, and then we'll be able to send out press releases and everything as far as that goes for the, for, uh, who it is and the exact dates. Um, they will do a lot of, uh, it's live, uh, they have TV program. Uh, it would, it would generate a lot of publicity for the city and the, um, and the county. Uh, they do off-site, uh, interviews. They will, uh, get with the Chamber of Commerce to particularly, um, focus on three different areas that we may want to promote that's, that's non-fishing related. Um, just different attractions or something in the area. Uh, it's over fifteen hundred minutes of, of live feed or, or TV footage for that, um, in that regard. Um, they do, uh, trailer to weigh-in. They will attract, we would estimate, over two thousand to four thousand people per weigh-in, uh, into the, into the city. Um, for the whole city to, to be here. Um, this particular organization has a lot of following, and they have a lot of top-name anglers that, um, have a lot of interest and bring a lot of, lot of attendees with them to follow that, so. This is a, this is a pretty big, pretty big get on our, on our part, if we were to do that, so I'll be asking for a resolution there.
Any chance they could move the weigh-in location, if things worked out great?
To, to where?
Our new building, we're going to get built.
Oh, um, yeah, if you're going to try, if, uh, if, uh, Commissioner Headley can get it built by early twenty twenty-six, I can. It might be, uh, for twenty twenty-eight. They're, they're not set in stone on where the weigh-in at. So, a serious answer would be, yes, we could.
I understand.
But, but currently, it's as the contract would be the Clanton City part.
Yeah, I know that. I just read that, and I thought, well, the joke can get this building built in time.
Yeah, if he builds.
That's great publicity.
If he builds a civic center with a drive-through weigh-in, we'll, we'll more power to it.
We could possibly, uh, we could possibly do that if, uh, I can get all y'all's vote, and I can get Miss Sylvia and Makisha down there to, uh, scratch up some money somewhere. We, we can get it done. I mean, you got to have faith.
Most of these facilities do have a drive-through.
Yeah.
They got the big doors open and go through with the bleachers.
That's right. That's right. We, we're going to be like, Commissioner Headley, we're going to dream big. We're going to dream big.
Hey, you got to make it happen. You just dream about it. Man always told me, if you can't dream it, you can't do it, though.
That's true, yeah. Hey, I, I think, um, I think we get a lot in this.
I know what this is. I don't want to be held liable with this contract.
You're not trustworthy?
I will.
Okay, let's see.
Yeah, he's a cop.
All right, so I'll, I'll be asking for a resolution to accept that contract as, as it stated and have the chair sign it. That's, that's my thing. The other, this other, um, deal that I have, if I can find all my paperwork, so, from the history of this, is, the reason why I'm bringing this up is I'm a liaison to the fire departments. Uh, and Commissioner, uh, Billingsley had brought this to my attention. Uh, this was worked on a couple of years ago, and, um, and it was kind of turned over to me, so we kind of reached out. Commissioner Billingsley reached out to a couple of places and, uh, and worked, uh, on, uh, getting a, a proposal together, and then I had contacted through the EMA, and I've got several deals. This is a, a proposal for a electronic unlocking mechanism for the fire, for the storm shelters in the county. It would be, um, basically the placement of, uh, it would take over the key lock system, and, um, would be electronically done through nine-one-one, uh, as a push button to, to unlock it. Um, I had a lot of questions when it was first brought up. I still have a lot of questions, honestly, and I, we didn't put it on the agenda for tomorrow. We just, I wanted to bring it forth for some discussion by the, by the commission, and, uh, if they had any questions or what, what direction that, uh, that you guys and Lady wanted to go, well, with this. Um, I have a couple of my questions was, I, I have talked to some fire department chiefs, and they didn't, at, the ones I talked to didn't feel like it was a, a big necessity at the time. Um, and then, uh, I'm not sure that we have still worked out a way to know that it is open when you hit the button. So, that's, that's kind of my, my questions is, if, if we install this, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars per storm shelter. And I think Commissioner Billingsley's purpose was to have it done on the test program, as a pilot program at one shelter only. Um, they require high-speed internet at all the shelters in order to operate. Uh, the county would then have to put that in there, and if we did not, if it, we didn't already have it, uh, we'd have to find a way to get it down there, and there'd be a monthly fee associated with that. And, uh, so I'm just giving you some of the pros and cons that I come up with in the research, right, uh, as a form of discussion, so. Um, that's kind of where we are on it. So, I just was going to present that to the commission. Uh, Commissioner Billingsley, uh, he can give some information on it, uh, if he wants, and then, uh, kind of get a direction on what your, what this commission may want to do as far as a pilot program for, for a station or not.
Well, I had looked into this. I, on the previous commission, looked in, and I never could get a, a price, but during that time, the questions were asked, how are you going to know it's open? You're going to have to have a camera down there. Somebody's going to have to see if it's actually opened or not. So, I kind of thought, well, maybe it's not worth it, and we'll quit having any problems with storm shelters not being unlocked. Or I quit getting calls anyway, that they weren't unlocked.
Yeah, well, the, the current process and, and, uh, uh, EMA Director, uh, Mr. Bolton could probably correct me if I'm wrong here, or Commissioner Billingsley could correct me if I'm wrong. The current process is, is, um, when we're become under a tornado watch, the shelter's open. Um, typically, we kno- we know when we're going to have some bad weather coming. Uh, we get probably about a day's notice, and we can, and a lot of the fire departments that I've talked to have, they kind of judge that on their own, and they'll go ahead and unlock their, their, uh, shelter at that time. And, uh, by doing that, they, they don't really, you know, they do it so they're not, like, going out in the middle of the night and having to unlock one. We, we don't have people, I say, I don't know personally, but I would assume, we don't have people running down there during a warning, um, and unlocking the shelter. They do it as, as it's put out, as when we go under a tornado watch where the conditions are favorable, that a tornado may develop, then they'll unlock the shelter. So, the shelter should be open at that time. And, uh, normally, we do an announcement, uh, on our Facebook page or something like that, so. Um, but that's, that's what he's, um, that's what it is kind of about, so.
I have a question for Mr. Bolton. These shelters are supposed to be locked when there are not any warnings or watches?
It's up to the community to decide that.
Okay, because the reason you don't have any more calls, they're leaving them unlocked full-time.
Yeah, his, his answer was for the public was that it was up to the community to, for whether they were unlocked or not.
Definitely.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
But yes, you're correct. They, most are leaving them unlocked.
Yeah. And we've only had one instance where somebody moved in on one that I know of.
Yeah.
And you had to get the sheriff to the victim.
Set up camp, yeah, yeah.
It did happen. Okay, anything else, Mr. Perkins, or anybody else got comments on that? Okay, uh, I'll be asking for a resolution tomorrow night to send Commissioner Perkins to innovate Alabama in Gunnersville. That is, well, I guess it's kind of in line with what he and Commissioner Bone have been doing with our parks. They took a bull by the horns and really, really have im- improved our parks and im- impressed a lot of people that have been in our parks with what's been done. And this will give him opportunity to talk to some people and maybe come up with some new ideas. Uh, this is a park summit, is what this amounts to. So, I'm going to be asking for a resolution tomorrow night to send him up to Gunnersville for this. Okay, and as many of you may or may not know, uh, there was a caution light, Highway, uh, Alabama twenty-two. And as many of you may or may not know, uh, there was a caution light, highway, uh, Alabama twenty-two and forty-five in Stanton. That caution light belonged to the county. I did not know we owned a caution light that hung over an Alabama highway till I called the road department. Because that's a dangerous intersection. So I had asked Heath to get us a price to, uh, reinstall that caution light. An overhyped log truck, believe it or not. Took the light down to start with and somebody hit the pole and took it the rest of the way down and the highway department took it down. It was pretty much destroyed and it was put up in eighty-nine. So hopefully Heath will have a surprise from a couple of different vendors. We can just.
Are we supposed to be doing that?
Because it's not theirs. They, they wouldn't put it up. They didn't choose to put it up. County chose to put it up.
So we assume the liability on it.
Yeah. And we pay a monthly fee. Is that not right, Heath?
Power, power.
Put the power on it. Yeah, because I called them when we get them put it back up and they said, that's yours. We have a contract with them, believe it or not, since eighty-nine.
I mean, I'm not opposed to us putting it back, but are we compelled to? Are we legacy then or?
No, we do not have to do this. It's just, to me, it's a safety issue. I've come off forty-five on the twenty-two down there. That's not a good intersection.
Yeah, I'm not questioning, man. I'm just talking about, we, we, we all just went through road and bridge training down in Pratt. And it, when you step out and you do something that should be the state's responsibility and then the state's going to let you have it. And so if we've done it for so long, for forty years.
Eighty-nine.
Then we, uh, evidently it's ours now forever, huh?
Oh, they told, they told me they wouldn't put it back. If it was left up to them, they wouldn't put it up. They don't see it as a safety issue.
Where, where is this? Forty-five, is that a ruffey?
Right there by Ebenezer Church in Stanton.
Ruffeys.
You know, Tommy Greggs or General Thor down there.
You gotta get somewhere where you eat, for me to, no.
Okay, anybody else got comments or questions other than eating? Okay, uh.
Well, that's a word though. We need to be careful about what we take on. And we got enough of our own roads. We need to pay attention to instead of out there on state highways.
Well, they'll usually.
Nobody put one up on the, on the.
They'll usually tell you if they want you off their road. Won't they, Heath? Okay, anything else?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's, on the, on the agenda for the meeting, you had other stuff under you.
If that's for the meeting.
Okay.
You can discuss it if you want to.
I don't care.
You know, I, this, this parks, uh, or this facility, you know, I'd like for Daryl and, uh, Mr. Perkins to sort of help me on there. Because they sort of consider. As a, they concern on this, uh, multipurpose facility.
Oh, yeah, I'd be more than happy to help you.
It's, it's more or less on the parks. I ain't trying to take nothing away from y'all because y'all do too good a job on the parks.
Yeah, we, we want, we want to be involved in it.
Y'all do on the parks, we'll have this thing.
Yes, sir.
It'll be stretched out halfway across the land.
Okay, anything else?
Joe, Joe just wants us as fall guys if it goes wrong.
All right, tomorrow night, six-thirty. Yes, sir.
Actually, it's two things. Work closely with Roger. We, I had a bill that was going to.
Get it to Mike Stone.
We gave y'all credit too.
We, we had a bill that was going to be a problem for bass fishermen and so we worked hard on that. The thing I, I forgot to mention a while ago, the rescue squad has a resolution that's out for advertisement right now to allow them to use a debit card and it's in the four week.
You mean nine one one?
I think, I thought it, well, it could be.
It's nine one one.
It's, uh, oh gosh, what's the guy's name? Katon?
Yeah, Trey Kate.
Okay, is that nine one?
Yeah.
Anyway, it's a bill and it's in the advertising stage now and I want you to know, we hadn't forgotten about it. He got it to us too late last year to get it passed. This year it should get through. In fact, I hope it'll be on the agenda this, uh, tomorrow, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Okay, six-thirty tomorrow night, regular meeting.